Good evening. Time is now 6:30. The town of Plainville is holding a special Board of Select and Public Hearing for the Town Charter Revision. At this time, there is a list, if you needed any documentation on the back table, there is a list of all six questions. And they have been put forth by the Charter Revision Commission. And then they have brought that forth to the Board of Selectmen. And we are down at this point, we're talking at a public hearing. And we entertain discussion on any of those items. I can read very quickly for you what all six are. Section 2.4 shall the annual operating budget, education budget, and capital budget be three separate items to vote and approve, and once approved, the specific item will not be voted upon again. Second item. Section 10-3 shall the tax due dates be changed to quarterly, beginning the next fiscal year, if approved. Next. Section 7.5(c). Shall Section 7.5(c) be modified to include eligibility of a resident with any or no party, a political party affiliation, to fill a vacancy on an appointed board or commission after 30 days of vacancy if minority representation is not violated? Next is 4.1(b). Shall Section 4.1(b) be clarified for the election process of the seventh member of the Board of Finance? Number five. Shall the town clerk's four-year elected term begin in January following the November election as stated in Connecticut General Statute 9-189(a)? And the final question is. Section 2.4(c), shall all annual town budget votes go to referendum for approval? What, yeah, you passed out in that packet in the back is each and every question would go forth with, for the packet anyway, for informational purposes, to explain what the change would look like if approved. And then we would be at the end of this meeting tonight, public hearing. We'll adjourn and then go to the Selectmen's meeting, which on the Selectmen's agenda does have a item there for, item two, for Discuss and Act on Approving or Rejecting Proposed Amendments for Charter Revisions. Now, that goes to then the town clerk to send to the state to prepare the actual ballot. So at this time, as it is a public hearing, if anybody has a comment or question?
On your list of six, you don't have a elector on the third question?
Yeah.
But you do have it in here on this, this one. Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
And I think that was brought to my attention after the agenda was posted to the town clerk, but yes.
Okay.
Yep. That's why it's made changes.
All right. So it should say elector on that.
Shall Section 7.5(c) be modified to include eligibility of an elector with any or no political party affiliation to fill a vacancy on an appointed board or commission after 30 days of vacancy if minority representation is not violated? So the actual wording in there would change to say, if no resident from the same political party applies for appointment within 30 days of the vacancy occurring, the Board of Selectmen may fill the vacancy with any elector, as long as minority representation is not violated.
And question one. That changes, that simply changes 2.4 completely.
Completely.
In the red lettering that the attorneys approved.
So after months of work by the Charter Revision Commission, two public hearings, they were pushed forth to bring these questions forward, which were put with the town clerk's office already. And they forward them over to the Selectmen, who have this public hearing as the third item for public hearing. And then after tonight, we just do what we have to do for, if there's any modifications that need to be made for the Selectmen's meeting, we do that. But we are here for the public's input, comments. Mr. Sean Peterson.
Question for Sean Peterson. Question three.
Yep.
The change you want to do there. Is 30 days appropriate, or should it be a little bit longer? Because the first 30 days, isn't that a, the board commissioned to fill, and then you guys pick it up after the second 30? So should it be more like 60?
It is 60, but the way it's worded in each of those items in the charter talks about 30 days. If your board, let's say inland weapons. If your board didn't find anybody within the 30-day period, it goes immediately to the Board of Selectmen. So in other words, it's given the 30 days already, so now we have to do our due diligence search.
Right. So I was wondering, if, with the first 30, the board couldn't fill it. The second 30, you couldn't fill it with that political party. I'm wondering if after that point, it shouldn't be allowed to be able to come someplace else?
In the question, right at the beginning, it says, after 30 days of vacancy. It's the only criteria, really. So if someone turns in their paperwork to the town clerk, 30 days of that board commission trying to find somebody.
Laurie, it doesn't mess with the minority representation.
Correct. But...
We don't have to wait another 30.
Okay.
Question one. Just for clarification. 2.4(a), it says it'll be in two parts. Does this mean we're not going to vote on capital?
No, it doesn't mean we do. But the actual budgetary items, you're going to budgetary items, or for the town budget and for the Board of Ed budget? Because that's the annual operating budget and education budget. That's what you're talking about for your two parts, two questions.
Right.
But it's still broke up into three parts, correct?
Correct. Later on, it does talk about that.
But it says it's voted. Town budget shall be presented to the annual town budget referendum, vote in two parts, each with separate vote thereon.
So how... Section E. Take a look at section E. In preparing and presenting the annual town budget, the Board of Finance will prepare and present a capital improvement plan and will include a five-year capital plan, five-year plan for capital improvements. At each annual town budget referendum, there shall be a third question. So I do notice tonight in our audience, we have a person who's a newcomer, so to speak, for the meetings. Have you, was there some question or concern that you had when...
Something that can air in exchange.
I mean, we do appreciate the fact that people come out. I think if we go back and look at the numbers for the Charter Revision Commission, how many over the month?
Like this, maybe?
Yep.
Not too much, yeah.
That's the level of trust that the town puts in.
Level of trust, we'll go with that.
Yes, I think so.
I mean, we did it a little differently this time around. We actually had the questions broken out. We also got those early to the town attorney to review. And he got them back to us, and we put them in a red line format, and then we broke them down, one question at a time, so it's not like a big one form. So there's six different questions with different results, talking about what the charter would look like after.
That's a big bonus this time, to be able to see what it's going to look like in the charter if it changes.
And the last question there for the referendum. Does Selectmen set the time for the referendum? Remember I asked about having it 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., so more people can get out and vote?
Because if this, for referendums, it's always the same, whatever's in the town charter states what it would be.
I believe if you wanted to change that, that would be another revision.
Voting.
To change the time.
Add after that question, or would we, would have to be another?
I think it would have to be another question. Should it be set by the Board of Selectmen instead of from noon to 8:00?
You think doing it this way is consistency? It's in the charter, you can always see it, versus what happens if the Board of Selectmen decide, oh, let's have it at a different time and a different place? So this gives it structure and clarity.
What she's talking about, be consistent with our other votes, that 6:00 a.m. election votes.
Right, you would have to have another revision.
No, I understand what you would have to have, but I would say, if we're talking consistency, consistency would be 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
And knowing that there'll be more charter revisions coming up, I think we can address that. I mean, in total, I think there was 13 total questions that you had come up with originally.
Thirteen.
And to make sure that we got this in for spacing, it was really kept at six.
Right. We think that what we thought were the most important ones for this cycle, basically.
Lane? It's actually in here, anyway. Unless the Board of Selectmen provide in advance for a larger period of time for voting on such Monday, the polls for the referendum shall be open from noon to 8:00. So it is, it is in here.
Every time you make, in my opinion, every time you make a change, it confuses more people.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about this now. Isn't that a change?
The whole thing's a change. Oh, you mean from the originals?
The other changes in this section are because of question one and question six. Correct? But as far as the time of the...
Oh, section A, right now, it talks about noon to 8:00.
Right, it doesn't say the Board of Selectmen can set a larger period of time.
That gives you the way to make a longer period of time.
But we're not revising that section. That's not a question on the ballot, is what I'm saying.
So it's kind of not a question.
To extend that for a longer period.
That's not a question on this ballot, but it's something to be addressed in there.
So that might happen.
Just for consistency, as far as the regular, I think people are used to us come having elections 6:00 a.m.
Right, next year, if the charter revision wants to change that time.
These are all the comments that I captured from the minutes from their meetings and paid for this. Attorney.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'll be came up with it.
But there's a lot of the town issues similar. It's probably what you'd get it like that.
So you're saying...
I mean, I won't change the question anything.
No.
You can do that, but I would check on that.
So what is...
If that's a revision...
Can't. We are voting on this in about whatever.
We're voting on the six questions.
Tonight.
Not on the, not on the way to...
No, this hasn't been changed, too.
So back to what Art was saying, section 2.4, paragraph B, is that the same on this paper as it currently is in the charter, or is it being changed to this?
The only thing different would be here, it says unless the Board of Selectmen provide in advance for a larger period of time.
But that doesn't say that in the charter currently?
Currently in the charter, that's not there.
So will that be added to the new verbiage in the new charter?
Correct. Anything that's written here would be the new verbiage. Anything in red.
But that's not in red. Unless the Board of Selectmen provides in advance, that's not in red.
It's red.
The whole thing is red.
Yeah, this is...
Oh, section...
Oh, you got a black and white one? Yeah.
I grabbed one from back there. The only thing that's red is section C.
Oh, no, no, you're looking at, what's at the top of the page? Yeah, you're looking at question six. And the reason why I can, question six, is they want everything to go to referendum versus you want to make a change for the splitting up of the town versus Board of Ed.
So it's in there twice?
It's difficult, because they're both entailing one section. So that's why I broke it out separately, put it red just for that one item. I mean, I don't have a problem with it being the Selectmen provide in advance, because it gives an opportunity to say, there could be some major questions up on a Board of Ed or a town budget, and you want to be, you've heard it from the public, the public hearing event, and you have, I'm not going to say like years past, when someone said that they would be okay if they wanted to cut football out of the Board of Education's budget, and you had 450, 500 people lining up here.
So you get people out to vote.
Yeah, see, that's not, not the right way to do it.
I'm just not saying it is, I'm just saying that's how it works.
But that type of an issue would be something, if that's what they wanted to keep on there, I would say it would be up to us to figure out, should we have it here, or should we have it in high school? Change the times. Out of the old ways, out of the new ways, it's always going to go to referendum, so you don't worry about that.
So can we go back one second?
Yep.
So if question one fails, would question six be worded like this? With B?
Yes. Yep, they're two separate items.
Correct.
Yep.
If that's not a red line item in this turn, I mean, in this form, it's not listed as a change.
I'd have to walk through that with the attorney as to how the wording would go, because that's how, if the only thing that passes is section C, we'd have to be able to incorporate it properly with what was left currently at the charter level.
And it's the same thing if question six did pass.
Yeah.
Correct, I know, I understand that, but what I'm saying, what I'm getting at is, maybe somebody's got, maybe people are going to vote no because they don't like that particular part of it, but you're adding it into the next part. So it might pass there by mistake. So it's not being fully transparent, the way it's listed here right now.
Myself, I would say...
See, it's not, you're putting out there where you don't have a lot of attention to, I guess it's a...
Session 2.4 is not going to be set in stone until they've had both passed, anyway.
What if one does and one doesn't, though?
There's got to be regret to accommodate that.
But he just said it this is the way.
Hypothetically, hypothetically, question one doesn't pass if question six does, and we vote on all three elements every single time. That's my understanding.
Okay. Question one is basically to split up the individual...
Split up, so if that doesn't pass, that means they're all together, so...
Yep.
Question six then says, if question six passes, then what happens is even if only, if two pass and one fails, you have to vote on everything all over again. If question one doesn't pass, but you go to referendum every single time. If question one passes, okay, that means if question two, question six doesn't, then you have a real muddish situation.
You just go to the town meeting for whatever doesn't pass.
Right. But what happens at the town meeting is then all of a sudden, we say, okay, listen, we're, we're going to the town meeting, but we're only discussing these two elements.
Whatever didn't pass.
This one didn't.
That's up to the people to vote.
If question six is more of, you're going to go to referendum always?
If six passes, referendum all the way.
Yep.
If it passes. If it passes.
I'm hoping that the people that are watching, have been watching all along, you know, consider the fact that these are very viable questions, all six of them, and I'm hoping that they consider that all six would be able to be passed. That's the importance of having a charter revision. You're looking at the things that may not work for you as a town charter, seeing what you can do to clean them up and make them work.
So you could still, like according to section B, the first question, so if you wanted it to be 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., you could do that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Question one or question six. That's the question one or question six, because they've written it in here. It's not drawn up in the red line.
I am really hoping that the people who have, are listening to this online, that they go back and look at the videos from the previous Charter Revision Commission meetings, because it gives more detail, more background as to why they're needed. As simple as something of, you want to clarify the way the election process works for the seventh member of the Board of Finance. It was there, but it wasn't clear. This version is much clearer, it would work, so you would understand exactly the cycles. Same thing with the next question, which is about the town clerk's four-year elected term, beginning in January, following November election. The reason why you want to state it as a Connecticut General Statute is because you have to follow that general statute and be able to have someone stay through the process of, your election results come in November, you still have to process that all the way through, including charter revision changes. Those have to go to the state of Connecticut, all get certified. By the time they're done doing that, it's the end of December, and, you know, it's easier for that person to hold that position until the beginning of January. And that's why the state statute is written like that, and that's why we want to clarify with the public. I think we hit on all the questions, except for maybe the second one. Tax due dates, quarterly, beginning the next fiscal year. And again, if you go back and review the videos and the comments that were made, some people do have difficulty paying an entire 50% of their tax bill, and that's why a lot of other towns do the same thing that we're requesting to do, which is put it into a quarterly Are they here yet?
I think it gets tough sometimes.
Do we have any other questions or comments or concerns with the current six items that are in front of us? Again, if anybody's looking for it, there's a complete copy of the charter and the home rule ordinances and all of these particular requests for amendment, that'll be with the town clerk. We're also going to scan those and put those online as well, so that way, if you can't make it into a printed copy, you should be able to have access to it online. And I know that we're looking to do some videos with people to, you know, give their interpretation of each of the questions, put that up also on social media, to be able to do that. Just trying to get as much information on it as possible, whether it's on the town website, Facebook page, Turnpike buyer, would it be helpful to put these questions out there ahead of time? Social media. And they can always call in and talk, or ask members of the Charter Revision Commission their opinion about those things. All right. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now adjourn at 6:52. Good evening. The time is now 7:00 p.m. I'd like to call this Board of Select meeting to order for August 26th, and ask if you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, which stands on a nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We will call Kevin Cunningham.
Thank you, Laurie.
Item C is to approve the meeting minutes from Board of Select meeting 8:12.
The only thing I noticed was on adding items to the agenda, it says to add item three and four, adding five, and it was items four, five, and six instead.
Okay, we can make those modifications.
And with that...
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for 8:12, 24 with those corrections.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public comment. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Hearing none, old business, we have none. Item F, the new business. Take me a second to read through all of these, but, Consider Act on Tax Refunds, as requested by the tax collector totaling $1,203.23. Robert A. Root for 8:11. Douglas J. and Melinda J. Bushy, $10.43. Rebecca S. Wettley, well taken, $14.49. Chad R. Conti, $4,2109. Connie Ellen DeGray, 2027. Michael E. Haynes, 1963. Veronica Albano, $27024. Jerry C. Wade, $6.98. Joseph E. Morton, 1309. Delia K. LaPage, $9.85. Benjamin J. Abraham, $5.66. Isan Infinity LTLLC, $40339. I believe the total should be $1,203.23.
Make a motion to approve the tax refunds and the total of $1,203.23.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item two, we had just reviewed all of the items for approval for or rejection for the proposed amendments to the charter revisions. It is our duty just to stamp that to yea or nay for any of those six. And here, entertain a motion at this time.
Make a motion to approve all six charter revisions.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And we'll then deliver this to the clerk tomorrow to send off to the state. All righty, so number three talks about a partnership with Hart Springs. Discuss and act on an approving proposed partnership with Hart Springs Foundation. It's an action item. Just wanted you to be aware of the work that they do and what they have, do, what they do also, but mostly it's in the center part of the state. But Hart Springs, if anybody has received their card in the mail, this is what they do. They look to help communities. The email I attached there shows you have, Laurie had talked about the different goals they have and the financial benefits. They do clothing donation drives, they do community partnerships, but they also do a financial benefit as part of the partnership. Plainfield will receive $0.06 per pound for cloth items and a penny a pound for all of the items collected. The funds can be directed towards community projects or local organizations that matter the most to your residents. So I asked for a kind of a list of things that they've done in the past, and so you'll see there on the community partnership, those are different groups that they've worked with in the past for their donations, or the town could take the donation money themselves. It's up to you, first of all, do you want to consider partnership with Hart Springs?
Well, so I think the partnership is a good thing, I'm just against the chanting.
Yep.
Clothing bin.
Clothing bin. Those are nothing but trouble, as far as people dropping off stuff that shouldn't be there. Obviously, if we want to work with Hart Springs, we want to do it in a responsible fashion, and I know we have cameras and all, but still stuff gets dropped off in those donation bins. We do have a, don't we have kind of something in town where they have to register those bins now and a whole bunch of other stuff where regular properties cannot just have them now?
Yep, that's there. It's the, it's the community's responsibility to obviously not try putting things in there that they don't want. This company, by the way, also sets it up so that they can have the monthly truck drive.
That was my next, so my next thing was, with the monthly truck drive, I think that's a great idea, where people can come and bring the clothing and their appliances or whatever. That's a great thing. The only thing that I would be against would be that...
They do speak to that, too.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. I just, I want to make that...
They'll come within 24 hours if there's a problem.
They're much more responsible than...
That's better than some of these.
Oh, absolutely. But there's so many of these groups out here, and I researched Hart Springs, and they are a great foundation, and they have a great reputation, very much so. Just, I think having one of those clothing bins, I think would be a problem.
I'll tell you about clothing bins, because they have one at CVS, and it became a problem. It wasn't even according to our ordinance, because it wasn't even metal, it was wood. The zoning enforcement officer went over there, and within a month, it was gone. So we have, we have the ability...
And I agree 100%, I'm just saying that we've had, we created ordinances for that reason, for these bins, so that a regular business would have to apply by it. I just, I don't...
There's certain sides, everything has to go in.
Absolutely, right. Everything has to go inside, there can't be anything outside. It's the responsibility of the property owner to make sure it stays that way, not the people that are picking it up. I, like I said, I think the truck coming down and staying for three hours a month, which is a three-hour donation drive each month, I think is absolutely awesome. There's issued tax receipts, I thought that would be, that's a great, another feature of this, when they accept your contribution, when you take something to killingly, you know, getting your tax receipts on the pay with the bump and you put it in the... So here, they're going to issue it right there. You can bring your... You can bring your clothing donations, you don't have to wait, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
The once-a-month thing, I think is a great idea, I think the bin is not. That's my opinion.
I think that the, my personal opinion about the bins is that they would have to abide like anybody else to the regulations, and if we find them in violation of the regulations, that they would be responsible for cleanup number one. Any continued issues for violations, we can then terminate that. Like we do anybody else, so they would have to follow the same guidelines. So I don't have a problem with that, as long as they do follow the guidelines set forth by the town. So partnership, you know, which in my opinion, we should be able to partnership with them, and then they follow the rules. I don't see this as a issue with this particular company. It would do use something in positive manner, where they would be taking not just the clothing, but the physical materials, which means in some, in some respect, you wouldn't see people just dumping them on the side of the road as much. I'm sure that people still do that no matter what. But I think this is one of those companies where as it's advertised, we will pick that up for you when you come for the deliveries, it'll make it much easier.
So would the bin, like say they wanted to drop off the appliances, would they drop the appliances off outside the bin?
This is something that they would call Hardsprings for, for a time to pick it up.
Because that would be against our ordinance to do that.
It would be.
They take any clothing, any condition?
Oh, no, that's being their usual condition.
So that's why the text-
And it has to be in bags. They don't take any clothing that you bring in a basket or anything like that. They would take the clothing, it has to be in bags, even at the, even for the truck.
I think we're putting out information flyers on it, so that people can understand what the process is.
Laurie Dimmick is quite, she does a good job in dealing with that.
So it's a two-part question, I guess, is your intent to then be able to approve the partnership? And number two is, if we do, would you like to see the financial benefits code?
Do we have as a town a, a charity, like not charity, but where do we make donations?
Not really, nothing designated.
Nothing designated, like we don't have a, I don't see any line item on the budget where it says donation for the, for things in town.
Yep.
Right, now the town gives to Project Penn.
Absolutely.
And-
And services.
And services.
I think to start this off, I'd like to have the monies come to the town first. We can talk to them about where we might be able to donate, come to some ideas, if that's the way we want to go.
Separate.
Yep.
Yeah, separate, I would be okay with a separate account.
It's kind of like the nip bottle money. Yeah, we'd point it for a street sweeper, but actually, yeah.
We're getting there.
Again, it's a great program, I'm just not a fan of the box. Does it, is it a take or leave it type of thing?
I would say yes, and I think the idea would be we'd monitor that and make sure that they are working within the guidelines of the ordinance and the town, and if there's a problem, then we'd ask them to take it out.
That's a question on the, the bins. Would they be on town property, or are they going to reach out to businesses?
This would probably be on town property.
Okay, so we would have more control.
This is a contract with the town.
Yeah.
We have a couple of places that those can go at this point, whether it's back on the corner over here, or whether it's at the rec center.
And here at the town hall would be better. The rec center's kind of off to be, even though we have cameras.
They have them back there.
Yep, yep.
No, I don't. But I mean, if we put this at the town hall, where people use the park, there's more participation at the park than there is at the senior center, so I think, is what I'm saying.
They would also have their three-hour window for their truck, but it'd probably be here as well.
That's, if it's a take or leave it situation, I would definitely be okay with the bin, but I would definitely would want the three-hour window, 100%. If there's not going to be a three-hour window, I'm against it, so that's what I'm-
Oh, it's three hours?
It's three hours, so we ask about this, okay.
Yeah, I would think that would be a big part of it anyway, to get the larger items-
Absolutely.
That you can't put them in, we want that.
This thing, I think, but part of my concern is it's misconstrued when they see the flyer, because you know how people are, they read what they read. And I would, when it says that they'll take appliances, I, that's why I'm concerned about the box. All of a sudden, gross, sitting there, when they didn't read that it's only taken on the first Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00. So there, there's where my concern lies.
I think as long as their flyer really emphasizes what the differences are and how to do the proper procedure with them.
I think that would need to be-
I think the town could promote it also, as all the, only appliances on such and such a day.
I think that would be major.
Once the flyer comes out, we can promote that on the Facebook page and on the speech on page. Any other questions or comments? Entain motions.
Make a motion to approve the partnership with the Hardsprings Foundation and to set the proceeds aside in a special account to be determined later.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, item four, I'm going to ask to table, it says to discuss an act on a request to the Board of Finance on funding in order to fund demolitions of buildings deemed unsafe. I won't go into the detail of where those buildings are at this point, but, because we're still working on some issues, so I'm asking to table that for now.
Make a motion to table item four.
And I'll second it, I just have one question.
Sure.
What's the first, this feature?
Oh, that's different, we have different, I'm sorry, it's a-
That's ones that bend on.
Yeah, I was going to say-
These people have taken out their applications for demolition, whether it be small or-
So is this is the date that they took the application out of? As I was wondering, now we've got this for demolition.
Well, we're trying to keep track of that for multiple reasons. You want to keep track of demolitions because you want to make sure that the property has a permit. You want to make sure that a property is notified to a fire department, so if they're taking a demolition, something happens, they're aware of what's going on. So that was shared already with the four fire departments and the police.
Okay, so this is-
That's not, that's not the issue.
These are the permits, no, I know.
Yep.
I read further.
Yeah.
These are the permits that are already-
Already applied for.
Been applied for, and further ones are prospective, got it? Hasn't been applied for yet?
Yep.
Okay. That's what I'm making-
Start me to motion. Table.
And I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Discuss an act on setting a town meeting date to vote on ordinance number 141 and 142. If you remember, a while ago, we talked about public hearing, which was brought up. So now it's at that point where we're looking to go to, we already had the public hearing way back on July 15. Now it's time to set a town meeting date to go forward with acting on those two items.
So it's a town meeting, not a town?
I'm sorry, yeah, town meeting.
Town.
Yep. So you go for a public hearing first, and go to town meeting.
And that's where the vote is taken, right?
Mm-hmm. You don't want to do it in November, so I would suggest sometime in the, in the middle of August. I think we had looked at September 26th as a date. Either 16th or 26th, we're giving you a 10-day window, I think we'd find on either one. 16th shows a conservation commission, which has still yet to have enough people to have a meeting, and the 26th is the other open date.
And that's on a Thursday, so I would go with the 16th.
Should be pretty straightforward, a town meeting.
16th is the basketball.
Okay. Entain a motion at this time?
Make a motion to set the town meeting date for September 16, 7:00. Yep, Plainfield Town Hall.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I still have, we're still looking for people as a section of the other. We're still looking for people to join different boards, commissions, conservation. I think we're still looking for the housing authority for the resident. Eastern tourism, Inland Wetlands, we did have a vacancy for Inland Wetlands.
That's Republican?
Yep, Republican, Republican on ZBA, economic development. Did we finally fill the Board of Education, I think we did, yep. Building Code Board of Appeals, and the Northeast District Department of Health is still looking for a Democratic vacancy. So if anybody is interested and wants to know more, please give a call to the town hall or send an email, we can talk about that. How many events coming up soon? We do have a September 11th event over at the Plainfield Park, there, the Veterans Park. That's coming up. I think we also, the September 21st is Celebrate Plainfield Day. I think that's from 10:00 to 3:00. What else do we have? That's it for now.
Launch the order.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Time is 7:20. Time is now 7:21, call this Water Flushing Control Authority meeting to open for the August 26, 2024. Full call.
Alright, Kevin.
Kevin Cunningham.
Thank you, Laurie.
And item C is to approve the minutes of special WPCA meeting for June 24, 2024.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for June 24, 2024.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comment. There is no- Old business, go to the new business. Discuss an act on a request from a resident on sewer hookup fee located at 18 Railroad Avenue, Mousse. So this should stay in your package. The inspection was done on the property. The building official went out to verify that the inspection showed that the former Sportsman's Bar was noted, that the roof had collapsed into the basement, been cleaned up. Four-inch cast iron sewer line is still intact in the basement. There are no plumbing fixtures left in the building. At this time, there's not appear to be any use of the installed sewer line. Therefore, they're requesting that we no longer have them as an active member, therefore not paying the sewer assessment fee.
I don't think they have any issues with that.
I don't know. So if you're okay with that, we would entertain a motion to approve no further.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for a resident.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Entain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 7:23.